All right, all rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Claudia?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Al. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. And according to the provision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized but have no time and place thereof, sent to the record, the Ridgway News, and the Town News newspapers, the constituent borough clerks, borough libraries, as well as posting in the school districts' principals' offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, small people or used to any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to fine not to exceed $100. Oh, I forgot to ask if student representatives are here. Jessie?
Yeah, here.
Noel?
Here.
And Joshua?
Here.
Thank you. Oh, I did this too. The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Curriculum Content Standards.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Now we'll go into public comments on agenda items only, and as always, there will be a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments on any other issues pertaining to the district. Mark will mediate this section. So, Mark, do we have any public comments on agenda items only?
Any comments, anybody? If you have a comment, please raise your hand.
Okay. We have a presentation tonight. We are lucky to have Susan White from Smolian Lupin and Company, our auditing facility. So, Susan, stage is yours.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to continue to be of service to the Riverdale Regional Board of Education, and I'd also like to thank Patrick Sletcher, Tom Bonzignio, and the business office staff for the cooperation that we received during our audit. This year was unique. We were doing part of the audit virtually and part of the audit onsite. So normally, we are disruptive. This year, we were disruptive virtually, so you can imagine, you know, what it was like. I also want to acknowledge that it's been a pleasure working with Tom Bonzignio for all these years, and I want to wish him a happy retirement. Unfortunately, he will see us back in May already for the pre-audit for the June 30th, 2021 school year, but I want to acknowledge that. Again, we normally appear before the board in December. We're late this year due to the non-reception of certain information from the state of New Jersey on pension information. So as soon as it was released, we were able to complete the audit, and that's why I'm here in March and not in December. We reviewed the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFRA, and the auditors' management report on administrative findings in detail with the finance committee before the reports were filed with the state. The board received an unmodified audit opinions on the basic financial statements and state single audit of compliance. Also, the independent auditor's report required for the state's single audit on internal control indicated that there were no deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting or compliance that we considered to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So the board should be commended, the business office. As we went over with the finance committee, the CAFRA has three bases of accounting that's present in the financial statement: the full accrual method, the modified accrual, and the budgetary basis. The full accrual basis of accounting records all assets and liabilities in the district, including the district's proportionate share of the net pension liability for the public employee's retirement system. This liability that's reported is approximately $7.1 million. The recording of this liability on the full accrual method caused the unrestricted net asset balance to go into a deficit. However, the deficit does not affect the financial condition of the district, which is in excellent condition. It also does not affect the cash of the district. The auditor's management report on administrative findings, there were no findings or recommendations in the current year, so the business office again should be commended. We followed up on prior year, the prior year funding which we had, and corrective action was taken. The auditor's management report, if you had a chance to look at it and review the CAFRA, also contains the excess surplus calculation, which indicated there was $325,000 in excess surplus for the current year. The board will have to appropriate in the budget for the 2122 school year this excess surplus. Additionally, the board will appropriate an approximately $4,000 number in non-public transportation aid into the current budget for the 2021 school year. As I indicated, the district is in excellent financial condition. Additionally, from the result of our testing, it appears the internal control system is operating to assure achievement of the board's objectives in operational effectiveness and efficiency, reliability in financial reporting, and compliance with laws and recommendations, regulations, and board policies. Does anybody have any specific questions on the CAFRA or the auditor's management report?
I don't think so.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Sue. I would like to give a thank you to the board of staff, Jody, Kerry, Jamie, and Claudia. You did an excellent job as usual, and it is now being noted by the auditors again. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Sue?
No.
Tom, no questions, but just a comment. Sue, once again, thank you for recognizing me earlier, but as is really the case, it's all due to Tom and Tom's office. I just get to say yes when you come in the door and ask me questions. And the board and the public should recognize that not only have we had an extensive review of our finances conducted by a very reputable firm, but again, for I don't know how many years in a row, we are ending up with what's would be known as a clean audit. There's no recommendations, per se, and the district has been in very good financial hands with Tom at the helm, supported by the staff and his office, and we will surely have a tough road to go to put someone in that office when Tom leaves us for a new chapter in his life at the end of this school year. So thank you to all of you.
So, Al, as the--
Accept your own.
I'm sorry.
You have to do a resolution.
Yep. I'll just--
I'll just say, Alex, you're my, as the chair of the budget committee, I'd like to make a motion that the superintendent and board secretary recommend that the board, having received copies of the 2019-20 audit, acknowledge having discussed the audit, reviewed recommendations, which there are none, accepted the audit, and accepted corrective action.
Okay, may I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that now.
Thank you, Alan. And Tom, when you're ready.
Claudia?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara? Barbara? We'll come back to her. Joe?
Yes, and thanks, Sue, for being so, so much of a help with the budget committee, explaining everything, but thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes, I think Joe's comment was referenced to me, but yes, thanks, Sue.
Yes, and thank you, Sue, and especially thank you, Tom, for your service and coming through with another clean audit. We appreciate it.
Both of you.
And Barbara, if you're out there, can you unmute yourself?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
There we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, we'll get into the student member report. Noel, do you have anything for us tonight?
So I know last week there was the musical, and I think it was on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and the media club had filmed that, so that was good that everyone got to still see it, even though there weren't allowed to be a lot of people going to see it in person.
Okay. Thank you. Jessie?
Just like since we got back from break in February, it seems like more people are going into school now. Like each time I'm there, it seems like more people are in the hallway, so that's pretty good.
Okay, well, since you mentioned that, what do you think of the new schedule since you've been back?
I think the schedule is good. I like, what you call it, how the classes are all like the same, sort of like the afternoon ones, how they were just like 30 minutes or however, like how they were just shorter last time. I think it's better how that everything's kind of just the same now.
Do you miss the all-virtual Wednesday?
Uh, no. That, that being gone, that's definitely, that's a plus.
Okay, very good. Josh, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, similarly, like, I think everyone I know is getting adjusted to the new schedule, and I think they've taken, I think they're starting to like it now. I think the first week was a little hectic because the times were kind of similar, but then they were also like off by like five or 10 minutes. But now that we know like the times, it's kind of just gotten ingrained in our mind.
Good. Okay, guys, thank you very much. I'm just gonna take a couple of minutes here in my report. I was cleaning up some emails, so I thought I would just highlight a couple of emails that I had gone through. There was an email from Jeff Principay on February 10th for Student Financial Aid Services. There's still a few workshops left, March 31st, April 8th, and May 25th, and they are all online, so if you have any interest in that, you can reference the email dated February 10th. Jeff also had a second email on the 10th for local scholarships that are being offered. The deadline is March 18th at 3 o'clock, and these must be dropped off at the high school, not mailed in. Then our new high school principal, Brian Pepe, had an email on the 12th welcoming the class of 2025 into the high school, and that he listed a schedule of events, virtual introduction on the 21st of this month, and then a virtual Q and A with current Riverdale High School students in early April, gun council scheduling sessions in April as well, and then the official freshman orientation later in the summer. There's also the project graduation clothing drive fundraiser. That's Saturday, March 13th, in the high school oval from 8 to 1. And lastly, Jeff Principay, another email, and this was today, and beginning on March 8th through the 14th, students in grades nine, 10, 11 can make their elective course requests. So that's all I have, and I'll pass it off to Patrick for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. My report is also pretty short this evening, but just to flesh out just a little bit what Jessie and Josh had mentioned, we did, and we did see and continue to see an uptick in the number of students that are attending in person. It's more drastic in the middle school than it is in the high school, and we are also now in the process of reaching out to the different groups that we talked about at our last meeting to encourage greater attendance with our special needs population, our students that have 504s, and our students that have, that are struggling learners in general. Once we get through that stratification, we will look to see how we can open it up for more general education students. Again, I think there will be a greater opportunity for that at the high school, just because we have more room at the high school than we do at the middle school, and I suspect that there will be some creative opportunities coming forward to perhaps take advantage of the afternoon classes as well. We are anxiously watching the opportunity for school personnel to become vaccinated, or vaccinated, excuse me, and we were encouraged today by Governor Murphy's announcement that school personnel would be moving up on the eligibility list effective March 15th. That will certainly help us as we continue to move forward and try to have a more normal school experience as we go. So this is just the first step in continuing to try to provide more opportunities for in-person instruction. And I thank Jessie and Josh for noticing that there's some more kids in the hallways. It's a great thing. And then finally, it's my pleasure to announce that Margaret Merkovich from the class of 2021 has been identified as our salutatorian for the class of 2021, and Ori Ben Yosef has been identified as our valedictorian for the class of 2021. They both received letters last week from Mr. Pepe regarding that, and there will be an honor awarded towards the end of the school year, both here locally and then county-wide as we get to that. All of the traditional things that we've dealt with before, like the valedictorian breakfast and things of that nature, I believe will continue to happen in a virtual environment, but we will still take over every opportunity to congratulate both Margaret and Ori as they move forward. And then, as Noel mentioned earlier, we had a very successful opportunity to showcase our talented musical students and our talented backstage students last week. Kudos to Mr. Wilson for continuing to organize and move forward with those opportunities. Anthony Trainor and the students in our media club for being able to film it and broadcast it for those who were unable to attend. And we did apply the same rules and protocols that are now in place for indoor sporting activities to our indoor co-curricular activity and allowed two parents or guardians or family members for each of the students to attend. They were spread out socially distant over the course of the three performances, and I was able to view it through the streaming service that you could purchase tickets for, and it was just a wonderful opportunity for all of us to showcase the very talented students that we have here at Riverdale. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Last week, we solidified our committee meeting dates, but we have had a couple of committee meets, so I will just go down the list here. Joe, budget and finance?
Yeah, I don't recall the exact date we met, but we have met. The rest of the board should know that you will, because I believe, Tom, is our next meeting, we vote on the preliminary budget?
15th, yes.
The 15th. So this, at the end of this week, you guys should be, the rest of the board, besides the committee members, will be receiving the documentation from Tom. One of the things that I wanted to, so you could kind of see ahead of time, is we did get a little bit more state aid than we planned, which is good. Everything will be kept intact as far as all the programs whereby nothing would be cut or anything. There's a few additions for possible, for teachers and all too, but one of the things that keep in mind is we're recommending to not go to the maximum 2% increase, but to keep it below that because of the extra state aid and some of the other things that've gone through with the budget. It's very easy for boards to just say, hey, yep, 2%, let's keep the money in the public. We want to make sure that it will be below 2% and relatively, I shouldn't say relatively, significantly lower than the 2%. So be on the lookout for that when you look, when you get it later this week. And the preliminary budget, as Tom says, is the 15th, which is a, for the public, it's just, we vote on the budget there, and then so it can be submitted to the county, and then a final one is done a few weeks later. It's sort of like a holding point, because we can even possibly make other changes there, but for the most part, the budget is going to come in under the 2% is what we're recommending to the rest of the board. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe. Facilities and security, Doug?
Yes, we had a meeting last Tuesday, which was our first kickoff meeting. Few things we discussed. One is that there's some additional funding from the state, and Tom, I'm probably gonna get this wrong, is it ASRA funding?
ESSA.
ESSA. I knew I was gonna, I was gonna screw that one up. ASRA funding, which is about $140,000. That will, if that funding comes through, that will allow us to replace both rooftop units at the high school this year, instead of just doing one this summer and then one in the following fiscal year. In addition, we had discussions about the security report. Both Pat and Tom reviewed it. They had some comments. It went back to the consultant, and they're supposed to be providing an updated report this week. So once we have that back, we'll, we'll kind of go through it and go through what the next steps are for work that's gonna occur this summer. That is the, that is the report.
Thank you, Doug. Community relations and technology, John?
We have not met yet, but we do have our date set for March.
Yes, March 22nd. And curriculum, Claudia?
We're meeting on Monday evenings with Pat.
Yes, okay. And policy and governance, same thing, Stephanie? Next, next week?
We are also meeting on Monday post the curriculum committee with Pat.
Very good. Okay, with that, we'll move into the consent agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. It's Claudia.
Okay. Somebody want to second that for us?
I'll second. It's Doug.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or issues about the consent agenda? Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, our first vote is retirement. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board accept with regret the resignation due to retirement of Building Services employee Frederick Smith, effective June 30th, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make that motion. He will be missed.
Somebody want to second that?
Claudia, I'll second.
Claudia. Okay. Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes, and I wish him the best of luck, and baseball's going to miss him immensely.
Al?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes, and thank you for all your years of service to the district.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
I'm gonna say yes, and on behalf of a lot of the students in the past, and I'll do all the little things that you did, Fred, like the paintings on the fields and stuff like that, the kids really appreciate it, so thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes, and thank you for taking such pride in work, which makes, gives our school such pride in itself.
Al?
Yes, and I'd like to thank Fred for his service. All anyone has to do is take a walk around this campus to see what kind of work Fred and his, his group have done for the school. He's gonna have, we have some big shoes to fill here. Thank you, Fred. Okay, I'll go on to the second vote is under 13 Finance and District Operation D. The superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending February 2021. May I have a motion, please?
This is Joe. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Joe.
And I'll second it. Alan.
Okay, Alan, thank you. Anybody have any questions with any line item transfers? Okay. Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes.
So, Al, I'd like to make a motion to bring forward the executive, and I'll allow you to read them then, but I'll make that motion.
Okay, Joe, thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Who's that, Alan?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just gonna go over some of the items that are being brought forward here. One is the approved adjustment to the retirement of Mary Joan Wilcox, and we have also a medical leave, a couple of additional work schedules. There's also a salary, a work schedule change and salary adjustment, an appointment of, for a leave replacement for a teacher of English, and a new administrative assistant to the director of special services. And there was a board recommends, or is approving a settlement agreement for a special ed case. Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
John? John? We'll come back.
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
He said yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Do you want to bring that one now?
Yep, I want to bring the retirement forward. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. It's Claudia.
Somebody want to second that?
I'll second that.
That's Alan. And this is, is recommended by the superintendent that the board accept with regret the resignation due to retirement of middle school principal, Richard Friedman, effective August 1, 2021. Tom, when you're ready.
Claudia?
Yes, and I just want to wish Rich the best of luck. He has done an amazing job at middle school for the past 14 years, so I wish him the best of luck.
Al?
Yes, and I--
Yes, and I want to wish him the best of luck. He turned that school around and made it what it is today. He should be very proud of that.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes, and best wishes on his retirement.
Doug?
Yes, and also best wishes on your retirement and thanks for your time with the district.
Barbara?
Yes, and thank you.
Joe? Yes, and you will be missed, Rich. Thank you very much, Mr. Friedman. Stephanie?
Yes, and we look forward to his next ventures and how we intersect with him in other educational forums. Good luck.
And Al?
Yes, and thank you very much, Rich, because this district is a better place because you were here. Thank you very much for your service. Okay, let's see where that leaves us. Yes?
I'm sorry, I'll just, just a point. It's Rich's retirement is effective August 31st. We said the first, but on our agenda, it's the 31st.
Okay.
And then, I didn't comment before, but on, we have two retirements here that were mentioned on tonight's agenda. One is Fred Smith and one is Rich Friedman. And as is our tradition, we will have a more formal recognition of their retirement as we draw close to the end of the school year in June. But these are two examples of personnel that have given a great deal to the district. As was mentioned, the achievements of the middle school and its improvement over Richard, over the years of Richard's stewardship, as well as the fact that, you know, if you've been here a few times, you've noticed that we have had a continual opportunity to be recognized as a field of excellence by a bunch of different organizations. And we are truly blessed with having Fred and his assistant Bruce working with us outside. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to old business. And on the agenda, we have board goals for 2021. And we had decided to probably, or come up with some shorter term goals due to the COVID situation that the district and, well, the state and society are dealing with right now with COVID. We will probably address longer term goals at the end of the school year. We were requested as a board to give Patrick a list of what we felt might be some short term goals, and they have been recapped. So Patrick, would you like to take over from here?
Sure. Pardon me. At our, two meetings ago, we set up a process to collect some information from individual board members regarding short term goals, short term meaning that they would commence now, most likely through the end of this school year, perhaps through the summertime. I collected that information, I'm sorry, I'm just looking for the memo here. I collected the information because we received over 15 or 18, excuse me, suggestions from individual board members. I was able to organize those different items into three general areas. One is reopening schools and increasing enrollment. The second is our, continuing to improve our security plan for the buildings. And three is to pay attention more to the social emotional health of both our staff and student, and our community in general, I should say. So with that in mind, there was pretty, pretty good consensus on these three items, meaning many more than one board member suggested it. There were a couple of other items that did not enjoy that same level of agreement, but these were the three, if you will, top and overwhelmingly reopening and security received, if you will, the most common comments from the rest of the board members. So as we have done in the past with goals, if the board is generally in agreement, we would then develop a statement on, that would have measurable items, measurable benchmarks that would also follow a timeline, and then present a, a document that would also lay out some of the steps that would be needed to accomplish these items. Clearly, since we were talking about this being March 1st, those items, those things would happen in short order, but at this point, it would be an open discussion from the board as to whether or not we would move forward in these general areas and then devise some more concrete language going forward.
Okay, do you guys want to start open discussion on these goals as they're put forth here on, on the memo? Does everybody have the memo? Okay, let me read. Number one was the district will devise a plan to increase student attendance for the remainder of the 2021 school year and plan for the resumption of full attendance for September 2021. Number two, the district will complete a security audit that provides, provides for improvements to the building access. Existing capabilities will be leveraged and incorporated into improvements to be completed by September 2021. Number three, the district will implement mental health supports to assist students and staff, address the challenges of a hybrid learning model, as well as the transition to a full-time schedule. Does anybody have any comment or suggestions?
So, Al, I'm in looking, this is Stephanie?
Yep.
In looking at the expanded document that we all received that sort of gave everybody's, you know, push in to Patrick. I sort of see, and, and this is probably more of a languagey, you know, a language nuance of when maybe they compile together, but I sort of see wording in which one and two are looped together in the sense of the building and access for students now, what, what we might look for in September and how security sort of relates to that. There's been a, there's been a shift over this timeframe and how the building's accessed in general that, that is different than what it looked like in 1920's school year, right? 1920, well, the beginning of the 19 school year, I should, I should say. And I think some of that might, long-term, be utilized going forward. So I would sort of say more, Patrick, if there's a way that you can sort of, rather than having three distinct things, if there's a way you could mold those two into a more comprehensive statement and where they intersect, that would probably be more useful.
Okay.
So, so just to be clear, you're talking about combining one and two and having item three as its freestanding?
That, yes, that is what I'm saying.
Thanks, Stephanie. Anyone else have anything?
If there's, if there's no other suggestions or comments from the board, then I will have something for you at our next board meeting on the 15th. And just be reminded, we are, kind of have a presentation by New Jersey School Boards on March 15th as well regarding identifying hidden bias.
Very good. Thank you, Patrick. Let's see where that brings us. Okay, any new business?
Al, it's Stephanie again. I just wanted to say that, one, thank you to Mr. Pepe for his several emails reminding us of, of the opportunity to partake in the show over the weekend. I needed that second reminder. And I was lucky to catch the finale and I have regularly attended the performances over the years. And, and I had to say, there, there was a little bit of an, an upside to being home in that while I love the live music, sometimes it can overpower the voices when you're in the same room and that has to, largely to do with the acoustics of the room. And here, you could hear each of the students really shine and they did such an extraordinary job and the, the setting of the stage and you could, and the, the lighting, you could really see all the care that it went into it among all of those students that Mr. Wilson mentioned were, took part. And it was still wonderful to see the live music and hear the parents and the family members and the other supporting members cheering for the students. And so it was a really nice opportunity and I think it would be great in the future, even when we get to be back in the room, if there can be that option for people who might not be able to access it in person and want to still participate and a few extra little dollars for the drama club, so. So that way, everybody did a really wonderful job and I was so glad that I was able to hear it.
Okay. Sorry I missed it. Anybody else have anything? New business? Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public comments. Mark is gonna facilitate this part of the meeting, so if anyone has anything, please raise your hand or write any comments. Mark?
Alrighty, as usual, just raise your hand. And let us see. We have a comment. And the comment is from Daniela Bosco. Can you tell me if there has been a committee or an organized group selected to begin work on the reopening plans? I'm sorry. On, on the reopening plans for September 2021? And has there been a committee or an organized group created to discuss a postmortem of the 2021 hybrid and remote schedules? If the committees have been created, are the members a mix of faculty, staff, and parents?
At this point, there's no committees established for that. I suspect that at some point or another, as a result of the goals that we're talking about, as well as further guidance that may be coming from the state, that may become more of a, of a, of an opportunity in the future.
Any more comments or questions? Joan Ingram, has her hand raised? You may speak.
Yeah, I'm really happy Daniela asked that question because I think a lot of parents are resigned to the fact that their kids are gonna, you know, it's gonna be unlikely that their kids are gonna see the inside of the school buildings with any more frequency than they see it now for the rest of the school year. And while, of course, you want to set goals and that's great, I think that, coming from a parent perspective, I'd like to hear more about what Daniela asked. Where's the committee? Where's the action? Where are the steps? And that the expectation is that the kids will be back full-time in September, full force, with a full contingent of teachers teaching from the building. So can we kind of ramp up that committee forming and discussion so that that could take place?
Well, as, I, I just, I think I just answered that question, but I, I think it's also important to recognize that, that has, has been and continues to be a goal of the district now. So as things develop, and as I've mentioned at all meetings in the recent past here, we remain hopeful that as vaccine becomes more available and other aspects of the guidance that we receive from the state Department of Health and the federal CDC will provide additional opportunities for that. I think it's important to recognize that while not everyone is happy and certainly not am I, I am not, that everyone's not back in school. We are trying to take positive steps to increase the opportunity for students to be here. And I just hope that that continues.
And we have another comment. Can you share the stats on the increase of in-person children in the middle school and high school that you mentioned earlier?
I, I can't really provide you at this particular point, a, a given number or percentage because we had to, or students were adjusting to the every other day attendance. While we did see an increase in the number of students coming in, we're also inviting more students to come back. I suggest, I suspect that that will become much more clear after the, over the next two weeks or so. I, we also were contacted by a number of parents who did have some travel during the February break, and I suspect that once that quarantine period concludes, which it would be March 8th, that we'll begin to see even more. So I suspect that I'll be able to answer that question better at our next board meeting than after that.
There's another question. Is there any chance you will open the in-person schedule to non-IEP holders?
Yes, the identified process that we're using is a stratified approach to ident, to address our IEP students first, our 504 students second, our struggling learners who are identified through the I and RS process third, and then gen ed fourth.
Mark, may I interrupt for one second? Please state your name if you're writing in a question. Thank you.
Any more comments or questions? No, I think we're good. Oops, one more. As the weather improves, is there any chance the kids will have full days, including lunch? That's Elaine Dong from Oradell.
I, I, again, I think it's going to be more a function of as the vaccine begins to penetrate our communities and as our community spread continues to go down. I need to point out that our northeast corner of New Jersey still remains in an orange zone, although other portions of the state have reduced to yellow. Once we go into a yellow zone, there will be other opportunities for us to go forward. And I do suspect that there will be some other guidance that will come about from the state and/or the federal presence, which would include issues addressing social distancing and things of that nature. If those things continue to happen, then I suspect that we will have more kids in school. Lunch still is perhaps the most difficult obstacle for us to address and the administrative team is looking at it. They're looking at it to determine if there is opportunity to adjust our schedule next year so that we have more frequency of lunch periods to reduce the number of students that are gathering, et cetera, et cetera. So all those options remain on the table.
Alrighty, we have a comment and a raised hand. Let me read the comment real quick. And that's from Kathleen Walker. And just a comment, I am hopeful there is still an effort to increase in-person learning this school year. I understand the push to return to normalcy in September. My hope for this spring and the end of the school year is for all the students to have a great end of the school year. This has been so hard for so many. Thank you, Kathleen Walker, Oradell. And our raised hand is from Joanne Baxter. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, Joanne Baxter from River Edge. I missed the last meeting, so I apologize if maybe I missed this. Going back to the schedule, the initial schedule that we started with had the in-person until about 12:55, and then the kids would go home and they were done for the day. Now they get out in person at 11:30, which is roughly an hour and a half shorter, and then they have that hour and a half in the afternoon virtually. So the timeframe is still the same, but yet the in-person has been shortened. And I'm wondering why the schedule was changed that way.
Well, I, I point out that the schedules evolved three Well, I, I point out that the schedules evolved three or four different times over the course of the school year since September. And the current model that we put into place last week increases in-person instruction by about 25 minutes if a student attends school in their regular cohort, regardless of the fact that the morning periods were reduced and added to the afternoon period. But perhaps the most difficult or the most important driver of that is by having periods of different lengths. It became very difficult to continue to deliver the curriculum in a meaningful way. And there were, you know, considerable implementation issues that seemed to be addressed by balancing the periods as well as increasing the frequency opportunities. And I do, I, look, we just started a week ago. We did see an uptick. I hope it continues.
And we have a, another question from Daniela Bosco of Oradell. Regarding the state COVID coloring, River Edge Elementary School has indicated that their schools reopen to a five-day schedule when the region hits a yellow and allow for less than six-foot separation in the classroom, as this is only a recommendation and not required. Do we have a similar plan to change the hybrid if and when the state changes colors?
River Edge, Oradell, and River Dell are meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. to review the different options that are available to us. I don't have every detail of the River Edge schedule at, at my fingertips, nor do I have it for the Oradell, but we have a, a meeting scheduled for 10:00 a.m. tomorrow to continue to look at that.
And she replies, I thank you very much for your commentary. Any more questions or comments? Alrighty, looks like we're finished.
Okay, thank you, Mark. May I have a motion to adjourn?
It's Claudia. Make that motion?
Anybody second?
Stephanie, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone be safe.
8:53, Tom.
Thank you very much.